Thirteenth, twenty twenty. Please join Councilmember Loretano in the pledge allegiance and the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, in these trying times, we ask for you to show us the light. We ask for you to assist us and give us hope for the future. We ask that you help the scientists and the doctors to help protect the people of this earth. We ask for protection for those on the front lines in our hospitals, our police, our fire, our military. Dear God, please give our dear Wally Campbell and her family, embrace her and her family in your arms in this time of need. Thank you, God, for all you have given us. Amen.
Thank you, Councilwoman Loretano. We're all present. We have no communication items tonight. Our city clerk will now give some information on how they may participate in tonight's meeting.
Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, city council meetings are closed to the public. Our residents have several ways to address the council. They may submit their questions and comments to publiccomments@goodyearaz.gov, and they can view the meeting using Facebook, YouTube, or the link from our agendas using Granicus. The public may always contact the mayor and council at any time by sending an email to gycouncil@goodyearaz.gov.
I need to ask this question, but I can't imagine somebody's already called in. But are there any questions or comments that called in before we start?
No, Mayor.
No, thank you very much. Then the city clerk, please read consent agenda items one through 10 by title only, please.
Approval of minutes. Number two, adopt ordinance number 2020-1471, amending Article 3-13 Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee Commission, Section 3-13-4, commission membership and term of the Goodyear City Code, providing severability and an effective date. Number three, authorize the acceptance of a temporary non-exclusive easement to maintain drainage facilities upon the approval of the construction plans for Elwood Street. Number four, approve the second amendment to agreement for basic animal control services between Maricopa County and the city of Goodyear. Number five, approve the appointments to the youth commission and the self-insured healthcare trust board. Number six, adopt ordinance number 2020-1473, amending Section 3-11-2 of the Goodyear City Code, Goodyear Youth Commission, providing for corrections, severability, and an effective date. Number seven, approve the Hudson Commons Parcel II Phase II final plat subject to stipulations. Number eight, approve the map of dedication for Indian School Road subject to stipulations. Number nine, authorize the acceptance of dedication of the property described in the special warranty deed for Rados Properties California Land LLC. And number 10, authorize the acceptance of the dedication of a public utility sidewalk and access easement required for the development of Project Hustle.
Thank you. Does anyone on the council wish to remove an item from this consent agenda? And can I have a motion a second to approve the consent agenda items one through 10? Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
I heard a motion from, was it Councilman Hampton, Councilman Pizzillo, and a second one from Vice Mayor Stip. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Mayor Lord.
All right, let's go on to the first public hearing to approve the Hancock Communities at Canyon Trails PAD amendment. I'm opening the public hearing. Senior Planner Alex Lotinsky will be presenting.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. This item is a request for rezoning of property located at the southwest corner of Van Buren and Loop 303. In 2018, the council approved the Christopher Todd Communities at Canyon Trails PAD, which encompassed the north portion of the property in question tonight. The request is to extend the property, the PAD overlay into the vacant area south to Lilac Street. The southern portion is currently part of the Canyon Trails PAD when was designated as Courthouse Home product in 1999. So there's three major portions to this request. The first, as I mentioned, is to extend the PAD boundary south. The second is to rename the PAD to reflect the current owner, which is Hancock Communities. And then the third is to add design guidelines in keeping with council's recommended design guidelines for single-story multifamily developments. These are the two elevations that are proposed within the PAD. There's two elevations provided and three color schemes per elevation. The applicant has requested a deviance from the city's current noise standards in order to follow ADOT's noise standards. It's a slight deviation of a three-decibel difference between ADOT and city standards. That difference is the difference between a 14-foot wall being built between the 303 and the property and an eight-foot wall being built between the property. Staff is supportive of the deviation and the stipulation included in the ordinance. Building the 14-foot wall could create a cavernous effect on the Loop 303 and could compromise the community feel of the proposal. This is the conceptual site plan for the property on the south. There's entry and exit both off of 173rd, if I can get the mouse to work, on the north side, and then entry and exit on Lilac Street on the south side. There was concern heard from the residents south of the property, and that main concern was about the condition of the existing wall. We did decide to reschedule the public hearings that were scheduled in January of this year until a formal evaluation of the wall was conducted. The city selected Michael Baker International to conduct that wall study, and it was provided to you in your packet. The applicant, there was a stipulation added between commission and council just to lock in the payment from the applicant for the reimbursement of the study. The results of the study did show that the wall was in good condition. The week of, excuse me, the week of May 18th was when they conducted the study. The neighbors were invited to reach out to Michael Baker in order to invite them into their backyards to conduct further analysis of the wall. Staff does find that this is an infill project on an odd-shaped parcel so that the use is appropriate. We did receive positive feedback for the use from the adjacent residents, and the commission recommended approval on July 1st with a vote seven to zero. That concludes my presentation. I believe a representative for the applicant is on the phone if you have any additional questions for myself or the applicant. Thank you.
Would he like to speak at this time?
Jeff, are you on the phone?
I don't have anything to say at this time.
All right. Well, thank you he's here. There's a question. I'm certainly, the council will ask it. So I'm going to close this public hearing. Will the city clerk please read resolution number 2020-2021 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 2020-2021 declaring as a public records those certain documents filed with the city clerk titled official supplementary zoning map 19-06A, rezone from PAD to PAD amendment 19-210-0006. Legal description Hancock Communities at Canyon Trails and Hancock Communities at Canyon Trails. Final PAD Development Regulations dated December 4, 2019.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second to approve Resolution Number 2020-2021? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Hampton and a second from Councilman Campbell. Open for council discussion. No discussion? Oh, Councilman Keno.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I wanted to thank the developer for listening to the citizens' concerns and doing the work to mitigate the wall. I also appreciate the work that they've done to enhance the design guidelines. I think that it's a very attractive-looking package. However, my big concern about this is the density. The 46 acres of the same type of product, this single-family, multifamily type of thing. And it's on one of our major gateways into the city. So for that reason, I will be not supporting this.
Any other comments? Councilman Hampton?
I had a question again, just for some clarity. So the traffic study, so are people gonna, if this goes in on the connection to Lilac, is that going to be only a right turn?
The connection to Lilac, thank you for your question, is, I believe, both entry and, or, I'm sorry, right in, right out, left in, left out. It's full access.
Yeah, that'll be extremely, I drive that road every day, and it's a very tight, tight turn between the 303, which is right there, and there. And there's another exit just across from it where people are taking right turns. Yeah, because everybody's going to want to go down that, that direction, and it's way too close to another light, to have another light right there as well. Yeah, I think it'd be really hard to do that. It will be very, and then the other exit at the top, is that a full left and right, I imagine, as well?
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, yeah, that, that's going to be an issue down there off Lilac for those, for those, for any resident in there. They won't be able to take a left turn to get out of there, to get onto the freeway, which majority of everybody's going to want to do. So, okay. And then, do you tell me about the amenities in here again as well? Is there, it's not necessarily gated, but I guess I'm trying to think. Will this, this will not be part of the same HOA as the Canyon Trails neighborhood, correct?
This is owned, or will be owned and managed by the Hancock Communities, so not a part of the Canyon Trails as a whole HOA.
Okay. I know they have their own pool, they have their own open spaces. They have a playground here as well?
Jeff, do you know if the proposed site plan has a playground?
I think there's an open space, but not, not like a tot lot, if that's what you're saying.
Yeah, like a tot lot?
Yeah, I think they just have a, they have some green space and some picnic space, but no tot lot.
Okay. I just see a lot of them going across the street and using the Canyon Trails tot lot there in their volleyball, volleyball, and the amenities there just directly across the street. So I'm just thinking of other ways to prevent that from happening. And then, the, you said the wall along the 303, it was, the study was 14 feet, and now it's eight feet?
The, so according to the current city noise ordinance standards, the, the minimum noise decibels requires, let me restart that.
Yeah.
The, okay. With the city standards, a 14-foot wall would be required. The applicant has requested to use ADOT standards, which, there's a difference of three decibels. If, if there was three less decibels, it would be meeting the city standards for an eight-foot wall. But using ADOT standards, it would be an eight-foot wall that would be developed between the property and ADOT.
Help with this, so. Just announce yourself for the people listening.
Thank you, Mayor. Katie Wilken, Planning and Zoning Manager. I just wanted to add to that question that in August, we're going to be bringing a zoning ordinance text amendment to bring the city standard into compliance with the state standard. So that noise will change. However, this rezoning request was ahead of that amendment to the zoning ordinance, which is why we added the stipulation. And then again, that way, we're in conformance with state statute, or not state statute, but the ADOT state regulations regarding sound attenuation. And it does lower the height of the required wall because the state lowered their decibel requirements.
Well, you're up here. Can I just interrupt you? So since she's up here in case she goes away.
Uh-huh.
Tell us about the traffic study, or is that somebody else would tell us? Oh, I should have kept my mouth weighted. Sorry, guys. Please announce yourself.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Christopher Baker, Development Services Director. The traffic study is part of the rezoning process and was reviewed and vetted through our engineering department. Unfortunately, engineering isn't here tonight since it's a closed meeting and we're limiting the number of attendees. But it has been approved. Otherwise, this would not have proceeded to council for consideration.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, so the decimal rating you said will go upward, is it, to be louder or softer with ADOT? Louder or quieter?
ADOT is allowing it to be louder.
Louder in the future. Okay, okay. Yeah, this might be a traffic study question again. I don't see how that's going to be very good at all with that, that south. Everybody, this whole development's can go out, because that's the only connection to the, the closest connection to the 303 is right there. And it's already really tight with the brand-new neighborhood that's just south of there with all, everybody coming in and out of there to make a left turn even into that neighborhood, so. And then, the other question was around, so right now, this is currently, if it did nothing, or if it didn't pass, the, it's already zoned for residential.
For courthouse residential.
Courthouse residential, which could be a one- or two-story, highly densely populated product. So I know a lot of the residents, especially along the wall, they'd prefer them all to be one-story houses. That's probably their main, main concern. There's going to be something there. They'd rather be a one-story along the wall. But we can't necessarily require that at this point, can we, to say?
With the approved courthouse zoning, I don't believe, or we cannot add a restriction.
Couldn't add a restriction or anything like that. Okay. Okay. Yeah, I, I guess my biggest heartburn is really on the traffic out the south there. I don't, I don't think that's a really feasible exit or entrance, or at least a exit right there if you're going to take a left-hand turn to get on the road. So I, I don't know. It's, I'm leaning towards not voting for it because of that. So I don't know if the guy on the phone has any suggestions or questions or...
Uh, Councilmember, Jeff while I'm speaking, I, you know, I'm, I'm only handling this case tonight, but I mean, we did submit a traffic report. It's been gone over by all the traffic engineers and the professionals, and they're not showing that there's going to be a problem with the, you know, the, the traffic movement at that particular location based upon the build-out of the site. And we look at these traffic reports at build-out of not only our site, but of the background traffic. So, I mean, the prop, the property's already in total for courthouse homes, which are almost always two-story, and it, at quite, at a density of, I think, about eight units to acres. So if it were to build out at the existing zoning, I think it was 200 and some units, and we're proposing a little bit more than that with these, with the single-family rental units. But from a traffic standpoint, I don't imagine this project is creating any more traffic than what's already been approved for the property, uh, to would have developed under its existing zoning. So I mean, I don't know what else to add other than we've, we've gone through the, all the professional engineering that we've been requested to do in order to make sure that the access points that we're proposing function and work per city standards.
Okay. I guess that's a good point. So if it was courthouse homes or these, whatever zone there, that's going to be, that's an approved exit.
Correct.
Either way, so, okay.
Next, questions? Councilman Stip?
I'm not sure which of you guys is going to answer this one. No. I believe that there's a traffic light at Lilac in Cotton Lane there.
There is.
I know there is. Is it, so I'm, I guess confused by your questioning about being able to get out. We've got traffic control there.
There's not a light at that, their exit.
At?
At this exit here, there's not a light to come out of that neighborhood.
At Lilac?
No, they're not right, no, not on, it's off Cotton. Cotton or 174th, there, there's a stop sign at 174th, and there's a light at Cotton. But this exit entrance...
So this is Lilac down here?
Yeah, yeah.
So what we're saying is the southern exit from the property is Lilac Street?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So that's, that's that.
Yeah. There's not a forest, like a four-light stop or anything?
There's a stoplight there.
You can't get, there's not a four-lane, like, you can't take a left, there's not a turning lane, left turn light there.
Oh, coming out of Lilac?
Yeah, turning, coming out of that neighborhood on the Lilac. The light is right up against the 303.
Right, but there is already a light there, so we're going to have some flow. Theoretically, engineering can extend the period. I'm looking at Christopher, and he's nodding his head yes. They can extend the amount of time. So the traffic flow situation from there with the traffic study and a traffic light already existing may already be, I don't want to say resolved, but I think we're at least 99% of the way there. As far as the rest of the project, now that the 303 has extended south, we've kind of cut off this parcel. And I appreciate the description of, you're considering this an infill because this is truly an infill project, so. And I think one of the misnomers that we, that we tend to believe is that everyone is leaving their house at exactly the same time, so all 150 homes will be exiting at the same time. And I know that was a concern in the apartment complex that we lived in. For that period of time, everybody was so worried about all the traffic. And having entered and exited at various times, I never sat in traffic leaving the apartment complex that we were in. So I just, I guess, throw out some caution to, you know, my fellow council members about thinking that all 150 people are leaving at the same time. I don't, I don't know what else is going to go here besides courthouse homes or the single-family rentals. And it's, and that seems to be a very popular model these days. So I'm in, in support of that, essentially given this, especially this piece of property. So thanks for the presentation.
Next? I guess it's to me. Thank you for those questions and remarks on both of your part. I would just want to compliment on the design. It's a good-looking house with a roof line. We, it's not, not a flat roof. It's got character to it. It has that homey look. I, I think, I think it's well-done. I appreciate that. I have to agree with Vice Mayor on his assessment of the traffic and the light. And it kind of reminds me when I sat on Indian School, we got that big complaint. So I got up 6:00 in the morning, maybe it was 5:30, and I sat there, and I counted them. And it was interesting because I didn't see the number they had. Now, there will be a day that that number will be, but for the most part, I think I did two days. So sometimes we make assumptions that aren't really there. And if they've had a traffic study, I think we've protected ourselves as a city. And I agree with Bill. There's nothing else to put there. What's going to happen is that's going to generate the shopping center. It's going to help it. And the other thing, it's right off 303, and right by I-10. Is that a dream for somebody working in Phoenix? I would say so. So I do think it'll, it'll sell rapidly. I think that's the end of the discussion. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Nay.
Councilmember Keno?
Nay.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Well, thank you. Will the city clerk please read ordinance number 2020-1460 by title only, please?
Adopt Ordinance Number 2020-1460, conditionally rezoning approximately 46 acres of land located at the southeast corner of 173rd Avenue and Van Buren Street by adopting the Hancock Communities at Canyon Trails PAD, amending the zoning map of the city of Goodyear, providing for non-abridgement, providing for corrections, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and providing for penalties.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second to approve ordinance number 2020-1460?
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry. Councilman Pizzillo made the motion. Councilman Campbell seconded. Open for council discussion. All right, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Nay.
Mayor Lord?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, I'm going to open this public hearing. Senior Planner, again, Alex Lotinsky will be presenting. Alex?
Thank you, Mayor. My second item is a use permit for a drive-through restaurant located at the southeast corner of Litchfield Road and I-10. It's proposed just north of the Rudy's Barbecue in an existing pad. Use permits are required for drive-through restaurant, drive-through restaurants to evaluate the traffic impacts, parking impacts, and impacts to adjacent properties. The traffic report and configuration proposed, which Rudy's is to the south here. There's another building proposed just to the north of the proposed Starbucks, and then to the west of the existing Service King. So traffic patterns would come north and then head west on the property. This site has met all engineering and planning criteria. There's been no feedback from the public, and that concludes my presentation. Oh, the planning commission did recommend approval of the item on July 1st. And now that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Campbell and a second one from Councilman Keno. Open for council discussion.
I have a quick question, Mayor, if I may.
Yes, Councilman Campbell.
This location, is this the one by Rudy's?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other question? All right, let's vote.
I got a question.
Councilman Hampton?
So how many, I know the, this one is going to be the gray one, right? Is that just a, I'm just curious. This one's going to be gray versus the other one's going to be a different color, the elevation?
The, you mean the other proposal tonight?
No, this one, this one's going to be, I looked at the, I was just curious. It looked very modern. It looked, it looked nice. I was just curious.
The proposed elevations are currently gray, yes, but it is still in this, in the design review portion of the review, of the process.
Okay, and then, and if it does back up, the traffic will go into the Rudy's parking lot, correct?
There's a couple of options to move the traffic from the...
Like the main drag in Rudy's is the, the right side, it looks like?
So this would give you access to Rudy's. This is the main drive that's between Trek Bicycle, Service King, and Rudy's. This is, this goes down to Test Drive.
Yeah.
So, so yeah, this is the existing driveway. It would connect into here. The parking island would be split here, and then access to Rudy's on this little corner.
Okay, okay. I'm just, coffee's very popular, and that's why they're in here. So I know a lot of them back up, so I was just curious. And a lot of them have redone their drive-throughs because of how popular the drive-throughs are here. So I'm just trying to think ahead, what, if we're going to head off anything, so, thank you.
Yes, Councilman Pizzillo?
Just to follow up on that questionnaire, because I've noticed the one on Australia Parkway where you have Popeyes. Sometimes that can be a little challenging because that drive-through line kind of interacts with Popeyes, and it can be a, a real issue. And I just want to make sure with this one here, that's not going to be an issue with Rudy. There's a way of circulating that in there where people getting in the Rudy's is not going to end up in the line of Starbucks.
This, this is a lot of internal queuing availability, which wouldn't impact any adjacent properties. And the applicant is on the phone, if you...
So it shouldn't have an issue with conflicting with Rudy's pull-in?
I, not according to the...
Christopher's going to ask something, because like I say, the one on Australia sometimes can be challenging because it lines, goes over into the, where Popeyes is, and trying to get into Popeyes' drive-through line conflicts with that Starbucks line. It can be really challenging. I'm hoping we don't have that same issue here.
I'm going to interrupt here. I understand it didn't close the public hearing, so I'm just going to put that on. I'm closing the public hearing. We'll just continue the conversation.
Okay.
Is it Christopher?
Christopher, what you got?
Mayor, council, thank you. Just, Alex had a very similar drawing up just a second ago, but just to provide some additional answers to Councilmember Pizzillo's questions. There's two ways in and out. There's off of Litchfield Road here. There's existing driveway on the northern end, end of Rudy's. And then, as Alex pointed out, this internal driveway in front of Trek and between Rudy's, they also have an ingress and egress there. So since there's two ways in and out there in order to get into the drive-through, it is a little bit different than the project over on Australia Parkway, or Pebble Creek Parkway, excuse me.
I appreciate that. I just want to make sure we don't have that same issue. Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Campbell?
I just was thinking, I believe there's a road just past Rudy's that goes to the Service King. So, they will, they can possibly get into, get in and out that way as well. So, that would give them three off of Litchfield Road and then off of Test Drive, Auto Test Drive to go in and then, because when I went to Service King, I didn't have to go through the Rudy's parking lot to get to Service King. There was a road there for me. Yeah, so, I think we'll be okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, let's vote on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Let's go to the third public hearing. Item to consider approving is zoning ordinance text amendment for historical Goodyear. Open the public hearing. Planning Manager Katie Wilkum be presenting. Katie?
Thank you. Mayor, members of council, can I get the screen so I can pull up a PowerPoint? I don't know if I need to do something. Elmo's still on. All right, as stated, we have two zoning ordinance text amendments for you tonight. This first one are amended, proposed amendments that relate to the historic Goodyear and other older neighborhoods in Goodyear. The two primary subjects we're going to be discussing are fences and projections into yards. We also, as needed, are amending Article II definitions associated with those two subjects. This will impact subdivisions built before 1975, which primarily is historic Goodyear, Litchfield Manor, and most portions of North subdivisions. There are a couple newer areas in North subdivision neighborhood which were built in the 90s and don't have the same unique conditions as the older neighborhoods. So, the first are projections into the front yard. These are a couple pictures of historic Goodyear neighborhood. The neighborhood was built in the 1950s, 60s, and 70s, and so most of the homes were built with a one-car garage. Over the years, many of those garages have been converted to living spaces, so many of the homes don't even have a one-car garage at this point. Or the garage was built for 1950s cars, and so vehicles of today don't fit in those garages of the past. However, and so there, there's been an obvious need to build carports in these neighborhoods so that residents can provide covered parking for themselves. There is a regulation in the zoning ordinance too that requires that every home have two covered parking spaces, and that could be either within a garage or a carport. However, because of the required setbacks, they can't do it. Even the picture on the bottom of this, which obviously this is a very lovely home, that would not be permitted per our regulations. And as you can imagine, this causes many problems. One, we can't issue permits because it doesn't meet the zoning regulations, so there's been a lot of ad hoc carports put up because they're doing it without permits. It also can create challenges because even in homes where, we've had situations where someone wants to convert their garage to living space, improve the home, but they can't because they can't meet that regulation of providing two covered spaces that we have in the zoning ordinance. So, really, it causes these homes to be in a standstill condition and doesn't allow residents to improve their homes, which of course we encourage. And this is just an illustration. This is that lower picture. This is the same home. You can see the carports only set back about seven feet from the property line. In the zoning ordinance, we require the living space or a front of a garage to be set back 20 feet. However, a front porch, and I said that wrong, a front porch or a living space can be set back 10 feet. So, a carport would fall under the front-facing garage regulation though, so it would require a 20-foot setback. Now, in our newer subdivisions, they were built with these regulations in mind, so the lot has enough space. We haven't had a major issue with the homes in newer subdivisions being able to improve and add on or convert garages. But in these older neighborhoods, they don't have a lot of room and they can't meet this regulation. So, the proposal in the zoning ordinance would allow, for the purposes of a carport, the home, the carport to encroach or project over that front side setback. So, as you can see from this diagram, they could go up to three feet from the property line. The maximum height of the structure would be 12 feet, which is in line with current zoning ordinance regulations for accessory dwellings. It would also have to remain open. They couldn't build a garage enclosed structure that projects in the front, and the main purpose of the structure should be to be used as a carport, so they couldn't build the structure and then use it for storage. So, the benefits of doing this would be allow some of the existing conditions out there to gain conforming status, but it would also allow residents to improve their homes, convert garages, add carports if they don't have them already, bring their cars off of the street if they have the desire to do that. And then, very important too, it will allow us to issue the building permits and then work with residents to make sure they come in and get building permits so we can check the safety of these structures. So, the other item is chain-link fences. So, we do not permit chain-link fence in the city of Goodyear. However, again, these are older neighborhoods. Many of them had chain-link fence already. It is quite costly to build a block wall from scratch, and so there are many chain-link fences in disrepair. The other issue we see is some people store items in their backyard, and when they have chain-link fencing, it's visible. An easy solution to make that area not visible is to use those slats they sell for chain-link fencing. But since we don't allow chain-link fencing, that wouldn't be permitted either. So, again, what we propose doing is in these older subdivisions, also I just want to note that we do allow chain-link fencing in our agricultural and agricultural urban districts. And so then also in these older subdivisions, we would permit chain-link fencing, and our hope would be that we could see chain-link fencing like the picture here that is in good condition, can be used to screen the backyard, so it'll bring up the appearance of the entire neighborhood. Finally, we're, this is not related to historic Goodyear, but we were amending the walls section, so we're sneaking in an additional regulation that is a benefit to the community. Right now, we don't have any regulation on the books that walls need to be separated a minimum distance. So, we have had a couple situations, such as the picture above, where two adjacent walls have been built extremely close together. And this is a concern because garbage could pile up back there, small animals, perhaps even children or people could sneak back in there and get stuck. It really is a safety concern as well as an aesthetic concern if garbage and debris gets back there. We have been working with these property owners to make sure these double-wall situations do not exist, but to make sure we're clear and upfront with our customers, it was, it's best to put a regulation in the zoning ordinance. So, what we propose is that wall shall be separated by 20 feet, and 20 feet is our minimum easement distance, so it's, it's a typical separation. And so, in situations like this, a property owner would have two choices. Either build a wall 20 feet away from the existing wall or use a shared wall, which is really typically what people do is utilize a shared wall. And then, beyond that, if there's a wall within 20 to 30 feet of an existing wall, then a portion of that wall should use some type of view fencing so that, again, you can have that eyes in the alley, so we're not creating these alleys of 20-foot separated walls, which, again, there's some instances where the walls have been built very close together, and then it becomes an area for graffiti or garbage collection. So, by having some view fencing, and again, it can still be secured fencing, it allows, again, a little bit more eyes on the street kind of situation. So, that concludes my presentation. Again, I do want to mention that these situations we went through are not unique to Goodyear. It is quite common to face challenges when you're taking a modern zoning ordinance and trying to apply it in older neighborhoods, such as neighborhoods that were built with tiny one-car garages and chain-link fencing. So, we're just trying to be proactive and help the residents. We see it as a benefit to the community. There are unique situations in these older neighborhoods that warrant different rules for these older neighborhoods. The Planning and Zoning Commission heard this meeting, heard this item at their last meeting, and they recommended approval to City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments, City Clerk?
No, Mayor.
None? Okay, going to close this public hearing. Will the City Clerk please read Resolution 2020-2065 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 2020-2065 declaring a public record, those certain documents filed with the City Clerk entitled "Amending Article 5 of the Zoning Ordinance and Amending Article 8 of the Goodyear Zoning Ordinance."
Thank you. Can I have a motion of second to approve Resolution 2020-2065? You heard that motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Hampton and a second from Councilman Campbell. Open for council discussion. Councilor Loretano?
Yeah, on the garage section, I just have a couple questions. On your first picture, you kind of show a canvas garage. Yeah, the one at the top, would that, is that not permitted then under the zoning or some of those steel garages that are freestanding? Would that not be permitted then or what's?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Loretano, I should have mentioned, we did establish minimum design parameters for these types of uses. We didn't want to make them onerous so that these older homes couldn't meet them, but we did want to not have situations where there's just tarp and steel beams. So, basically, what it says is that the materials and colors of the carport need to be consistent with that of the home.
Okay, yeah, because the second one where it matches the roof line, they did a really nice job.
Yes, that's, that's a very, they could still also have a freestanding carport, though.
As long as it kind of ties in.
As long as the materials and colors are consistent with that of the main house.
And then, the other question is like for the freestanding one, under this, are they allowed to block in? Because I know sometimes the sun comes from the side. Can they block in one side or not or what's the?
It has to remain open on three sides. You know, and our thought was one side is going to be blocked by the house.
Okay, so three...
So, basically, I think the answer to your question is no.
Yeah, they couldn't block off if it was attached to the house.
Yeah, because this is blocked, so this needs to remain open.
Okay, so if it was a freestanding one, then they can maybe block off, build it that way or whatever.
Perhaps, yeah.
Okay, just checking, because I know we don't want a bunch of piecemeal architecture there either, so, okay, thank you.
Any others? Councilwoman Stip?
Just real quick, were they allowed to hang those, what do you know, those shade things that drop down? Would that be allowed? I mean, it's not solid, but you know how you can put those things down in the carports to block the sun from coming in? But they're almost like, well, you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Pazillo, I don't know the answer to that. It's possible they might be able to do that. I don't know of a regulation that, I mean, I'm thinking of people have front porches and use those. There's no HOA in the neighborhood that has more onerous regulations, so as long as it's in good repair, they might be able to do that.
Okay.
You were talking about the ones that roll up and roll down?
Yeah.
Councilman Campbell?
Katie, I want to thank you for doing this because the North subdivision, some of the front yards, the homes are set back far enough where they could use a carport if we would allow that. And the same with historic Goodyear. And I know a lot of the families there want to improve their home and make it more livable for them, and I, I just think this is a great thing for us to do because these older neighborhoods, we want them to thrive and we want them to be beautiful, but we want to help the homeowners be able to do what they want to do within reason. And the chain-link fencing is really interesting because so many of them have them in the alley that they no longer use, and if they can put slats in, and I'm hoping that maybe we will inform the homeowners how to do that or where they can get it or, you know, at least share that information with them, because once we give them this new ordinance, they need to know how they go about doing whatever it is, how to get a permit, how much it costs, where plans are, or anything like that that would help them, because I know we have a lot of homeowners that are just awesome, awesome residents, and they would love to do this if they just knew how to do it or knew who to call. So, it'd be great if we tell them once this is, our ordinance is in effect.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hampton?
So, yeah, also I agree with a lot of everybody saying here as well. So, yeah, thank you. I think this will be really good to have a standard in place that was lacking here. And then, my question was on Slide 7, you say allow existing conditions to gain conforming status. Is there, looking through the information, is there a timeline? So, I'm just curious, is there going to be anybody that we do this and someone has to tear down something or change something immediately? Is there going to be a, I guess, a cost to somebody having to correct where they're at immediately? I guess with the code enforcement start enforcing something immediately? So, I was just curious.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember. Well, again, for the instance on the bottom, we would consider that it's possibly legal non-conforming, depending on what year that was built, but when you have a legal non-conforming status, you can't expand it. So, again, it puts you in this holding position of not being able to do certain things with your home. But once it, you know, if this ordinance passes, they will now conform with the zoning ordinance as soon as the ordinance is in effect. Now, as to the status of if these receive building permits or not, we would have to look at those on a case-by-case basis that I couldn't speak to in detail. But in terms of conformance with the zoning ordinance, that would happen almost immediately. And then, we'll work closely with code compliance on some of the situations that are out there that don't meet even the new code. And again, as Councilmember Campbell's suggestion, probably try and give them advice on how to meet the code, not just you're not meeting it, but what's their path forward.
Yeah, because I've walked through this whole neighborhood in the past, the entire whole north in this subdivision. So, I was just curious, there's a lot of different type of houses in here that are all types. I was just curious, I mean, I know it's, also make sure there's not something, we put it in a place and someone can't comply, and then we go through the process of code enforcement, and then they just can't, they can't meet it, and then they, we created an issue with, with them and their, and their home, or there's fines or whatever the last steps would be so that we're, I don't know, it'd be, there's a lot of lower income in here. I don't know if they can necessarily afford some of it or have to go into compliance with it, so. I do like the thing, I should make sure we're educating as much as possible. We try to help them as much as possible, maybe some CDAC-type funds, things like that might help, but just thoughts, so.
Thank you. We will certainly monitor it as we move forward, and if there are trouble with compliance, we can come back to council.
Any other?
And this is kind of another question as well. This may be for the next one. Same thing, I mean, for, I'll just bring it up there, just saying, about how fast the compliance is going to be and how, if people can comply once things are changed.
Any other discussion? Well, through the years, we've had people that wanted to make some of these changes. Some of them purchased home sites or purchased a home and then found out later. I remember one on the Art Council. Anyway, so, they became furious about it and not really having any recourse to change that. So, I, this, I think, really calls for a good article in the in-focus. You have good examples you could use, and then you could really show in the in-focus how you would change that, so, and, and the steps that you would have to take to do that. So, I think this is a great idea. So, let's do a roll call of these.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Pazillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Will the City Clerk please read ordinance number 2020-1469 by title only?
Adopt ordinance number 2020-1469, amending Article II definitions, Article 5, property improvement standards of the zoning ordinance, and Article 8, general requirements as amended, providing for corrections, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and providing for penalties.
Thank you. Can I have a motion of second to approve ordinance number 2020-1469? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Keno and a second from Councilman Stip. Oh, here we go. Pazillo, open for council discussion. No discussion? Roll call? Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Oratano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, I'd like to open the fourth public hearing item to consider approving the various zoning ordinance text amendments. So, I'm opening the public hearing. Planning Manager Katie Wilken, are you going to stay right there and talk to us, aren't you? Will present. Katie?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, this is another case with various zoning ordinance text amendments. I do want to mention on this one that we were going to bring forward an amendment to mobile food vending, meaning food trucks. We are still working on that, so we anticipate that'll be to you in August. We also had the MF12 Single Family District that was coming forward, and we're still touching that up too, so we anticipate that'll come to you in August, too. There are also, as I mentioned earlier, the sound attenuation. We have quite a few coming back to you in August. We tried to get done what we could, and then we're using the break to finish up the others. So, these are, there's three amendments associated with this, changing the rules for zoning protest areas, the regulations regarding residential driveways, and parking garage regulations. We are proposing amending Article 1, Article 2, and Article 6 associated with those changes. So, the first is to come into compliance with a state law that's been on the books for a couple of years. So, the zoning protest area is, gives residents near, or I should say, property owners next to a proposed rezoning, an opportunity to trigger a supermajority vote of the City Council, meaning six out of seven council members would have to vote in favor of zoning to have it passed. The old rule said that 20% of any of the property owners of any one side of a zoning area triggered the supermajority vote. So, what it meant, if there was one property owner on one side, they alone could trigger that supermajority vote. It also was confusing how the language was written when you had odd-shaped parcels what counts as a side. And so, a few years ago, the state legislature changed the rules. And now, basically, they have a definition of the zoning protest area, and it takes 20% of the owners of the zoning protest area to trigger that supermajority vote. And what the, what the zoning protest area is, it includes the area requested for the zoning change, and then 150 feet out, and that entire area. So, if 20% of the property owners of that area provide protest in writing, it would trigger a supermajority vote. What's interesting is that since it includes the zoning area itself, when you get to the larger zonings, it's near impossible to trigger that supermajority vote. However, this is a state law, and we have to comply with it. Next, is our regulations regarding driveways. So, there's been a lack of clarity between what is a driveway, what is a parking area, and what is a patio. Now, certainly, there are times when people have the need to extend their driveway, and it's understandable. But there have been a few situations where people have paved their entire front yard, and we don't think that that is the intent of what the zoning ordinance is meant to allow. However, to be fair to the residents, when you looked at our zoning ordinance, there was definitions of regulations regarding a driveway, and nothing really said, I can't build a parking lot next to my driveway for my cars, or I can't build a patio next to my driveway for those cars. So, we're providing clarity to the zoning ordinance of what is meant. So, basically, you can have 50% of your front yard paved or non-pervious surface. So, for a typical, or 30-foot maximum, for our typical suburban lots, for some of the large AU lots, it can be a little more. So, really, this isn't too much of a change, especially the new homes that come in, this is how we institute it, it's just providing that clarity. So, if you want to add an area next to your driveway, if you're adding more than 100 square feet of pavement, we're going to count that as part of your driveway when making sure it meets the regulations. Now, the other change we put in there is that there's currently a regulation in the zoning ordinance that your driveway has to be separated three feet from the property line. Again, I think that was originally set to make sure that there was proper areas for drainage. However, there's many, many cases where people have built driveways up to their property line, and we don't necessarily have an interest in going to residents and asking them to tear up driveways. You know, sometimes people have bought homes where they're not the ones who put in this driveway. And now that we have a regulation limiting that non-pervious surface to 50% of the yard, you know, we, we spoke with engineering, worked closely with them, there isn't a concern that we won't have the drainage areas we need. So, we are removing that requirement, so you could now build a driveway up to your property line. So, again, those homes that have already done that, if this were to pass, they will become conforming to the zoning ordinance. So, again, our goal was to try and make that balance of allowing people to make these improvements. We understand people need to extend their driveways, but also, let's try and limit the situations where people are paving so much of their front yard. Next is parking structure regulations. So, as we've been preparing for our Civic Square Design, we realized that there are unique needs for parking dimensions and aisle width in parking garages. And this is our first parking garage, so we didn't have those regulations, they didn't exist. So, we are proposing amending the zoning ordinance to add these regulations in. It was quite easy, we had many cities, such as Phoenix and Tempe, who, where parking garages are common, that we could use as examples. It did seem that there was consistency between these regulations. There are industry standards regarding parking design, so we're confident that these are good regulations. And, you know, we're already working with the Civic Square Design to make sure that these regulations meet the needs. We also created some specific design guidelines for the outside of parking garage structures. So, again, we, we, you know, don't want to be onerous in our requirements, but we also don't want just gray concrete parking garages being installed that don't reflect the main architecture. So, we require a mix of materials, four-sided architecture, treatment around the first floor especially. Is that it? And that concludes the presentation on this set.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the public?
No, Mayor.
Okay, then, our closest public hearing. Will the City Clerk please read Resolution Number 2020-2066 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution Number 2020-2066 declaring a public record those certain documents filed with the City Clerk entitled "Amending Article 1 of the Zoning Ordinance and Amending Article 6 of the Goodyear Zoning Ordinance."
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second to approve Resolution Number 2020-2066? Do I hear that motion?
Second.
A motion by Councilman Hampton and a second by Councilman Campbell. Open for council discussion.
I just got one.
Councilwoman Stip, Vice Mayor Stip?
Katie, I think you touched on it, but can you just specifically address what happens with existing properties that are now nonconforming?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor. That's a great question. I don't have the full answer for you, but, again, this isn't retroactive. We can't implement something retroactive, so my guess is, most of those properties are going to be considered legal nonconforming, so they won't need to tear out what's already there, because they were conforming to the zoning ordinance as it was written at the time they installed those improvements.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hampton?
That was my exact question. I was just looking at the picture of the entire concrete front yard, if anybody's going to have to tear anything out and get the 50%, like we're looking at now, so, yeah, that is, that's, yeah, no one's going to have to pay money to tear out their concrete, so, okay.
The only reason I'm hesitant on that is, again, each, sometimes there's additional rules of the HOA that aren't with the city, so I can't speak to what an HOA may or may not.
There's no HOA, there's no HOA in these, there's no HOAs in these ones, these neighborhoods.
They, this situation has happened throughout the city. There are some areas, I personally know of a house, I think in Canyon Trails, where this was installed. So, it's not just the older neighborhoods, they are sprinkled.
But now, we're getting ready to three feet, you're saying? Now, I can go extend my patio driveway all the way from to my neighbors?
No, now you can. Now, you, before, we required a three-foot buffer, and now you can go all the way to the property line. And there were a lot of people who didn't know that regulation, and they extended their driveways, so they weren't conforming, now they'll conform.
Okay, so, current, now I can do that?
It's a benefit to them.
Yeah, so, I do it today, I can go all the way to the property line?
Yes.
I might be doing that, thank you.
Councilmember Oratano?
So, they're legally conforming, nonconforming, conforming now, so if they sell it, then that just runs with, that property is always in that position, so two or three owners down the road don't have to worry about it being, absent HOA issues?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any other? All right, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Oratano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye. Adopt Ordinance Number 2020-14, I'm sorry, would you read the next one? Yeah, we're on the second one.
Adopt Ordinance Number 2020-1470, amending Article 1, Administration of Procedures, Article 2, Definitions, and Article 6, Off-Street Parking and Loading of the Zoning Ordinance as Amended, Provided for Corrections, Providing for Severability, Providing for an Effective Date, and Providing for Penalties.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second to approve Ordinance Number 2020-1470? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilor Oratano and a second from Councilman Campbell. Open for council discussion. No discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Oratano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Whenever I hear you, just mayor, I go.
Mayor Lord?
Mayor Lord? Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. It's down to 15, the last public hearing item to consider approving the use permit for a drive-through restaurant on Pad 1 of Aldi Grocery Store. I'm going to open that public hearing. Planning Manager Katie Wilken presenting. Katie?
Thank you. As stated, this is a use permit for a drive-through restaurant. It isn't associated with Aldi, but it's on the pad site in front of Aldi, so I hope the name of the project didn't confuse anyone. So, this is located on Estrella Parkway and Roosevelt Street, as I stated, just in front of the Aldi Grocery Store. You also might remember, it's just next to the curve at Estrella Commons, and you just looked at a rezoning and then a preliminary plat for that project recently, so we had some discussions about the site. There is a shared driveway with Aldi to access the site. The restaurant entrance is on the east side, and the drive-through lane will be, the pickup window in the drive-through lane will face Estrella Parkway, and the customer parking is to the east and south of the site. Since the drive-through window faces Estrella Parkway, we don't permit that unless that there is significant screening. So, as you can see on the elevation, they do have a canopy and screen wall. It reminds me similar to the one that's at Dairy Queen, to screen that pickup window from the street. No, I don't know what it is. So, the architecture has been created to mimic that of the Aldi Grocery Store. And here are the elevations of the Aldi Grocery Store, so you can see that sloping roofline. And then, although the, sometimes the colors look different because of the different renderings, but the colors and materials are also the same between the Aldi Grocery Store and the proposed drive-through restaurant. Oh, and I didn't realize, again, the pickup window is screened, and there is additional landscaping and a pony wall to screen the headlights from Estrella Parkway. Staff found that the request meets all of our codes and ordinances. We haven't received any inquiries or objections from the general public on this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this use permit with the recommended stipulations. The applicant is not on the line. He did state that he was in agreement with the recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any comments from the public?
No, Mayor.
Can I have a motion a second to approve the use permit request for the convenience-use drive-through restaurant within the C2 General Commercial Zoning District, subject to stipulations? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I heard, I heard Vice Mayor made the motions, and Councilwoman Stip made the second. Open for council discussion.
Mayor, we need a close public hearing.
Did I get it wrong? I can't hear out of my right ear tonight, so just not the hearing aids, I've lost hearing on my right ear, so...
You can close the public hearing.
I have a doctor appointment scheduled. All right, so what, who made it? You're trying to talk to me here, and it's not going to work. So, just tell me, City Clerk, who made the motion?
I hear you.
Oh, and Council, Vice Mayor Stip and second Pizzillo, thank you. Open for council discussion. Now, was that hard, guys? Okay, all right, let's go. Council discussion? No discussion? Vice Mayor?
Mayor, close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing, sorry. I'm sorry. It's a good thing I have Bill sitting next to me. Yes, I know, I need it tonight.
Mayor, I have a question, if I may ask it.
Yes, you may ask it.
We don't know what's coming in, and if we approve this, we'll find out what's coming in when they come for permits, right?
Thank you. It is always possible that they could build it as a spec building and rent it out. We've heard it is a coffee shop, but we don't know that for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question, Mayor.
But the coffee shop is supposedly built by Aldi, right? Or supposedly part of there?
It shares the site with Aldi, but it is not part of Aldi's operation. We've heard it's a popular coffee shop.
It sounded like the assumption was it was. Okay.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes. Thank you. Councilman Keno?
Will the, there be any access through the curve at Estrella Commons with this particular establishment? I know that, that we've, we've talked about Aldi and the trucks and things, I was just curious whether or not they're also going to engage that same driveway.
Thank you, Councilmember. There is a driveway, you can, and I'm sorry, I don't have the curve right here, but this driveway goes down a little further and connects to Roosevelt, and then it also goes down to the entrance of the curve. Now, it's not, you know, the curve is a gated community, and so, that driveway is outside the gate, so it's not, you know, I wouldn't consider it part of like driving through their community because it's outside of the gate. But, one way of accessing this property would be driving down that area, so...
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, let's go to the business. I'd like to remind the council to wait for the motion a second before discussion. First item on business is consider approving the FY 2020-21 Community Funding Support to Nonprofit Organizations Serving Goodyear Residents. Deputy City Manager Juanet Reed will be presenting.
Can we get back to the list of presentations? There we go, oh, thank you. I'm a newbie at this, so you, here we go. Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight I'm here to advance the funding recommendations of the Goodyear Community Funding Subcommittee. The competitive grant process supports nonprofit agencies delivering human and health services and quality-of-life programs to Goodyear residents. Organizations funded in fiscal year 20 will be providing 12-month reports to us by July 15. We ask that those who are able to submit their 12-month reports early, we were hoping to be able to capture and tally how many Goodyear residents had been served last year. But because their deadline is July 15, we don't have all of the numbers. But we did get 14 recipients. They did respond. And they reported serving over 7,000 unduplicated Goodyear residents through their programs in the past fiscal year. There is a slide missing. I'm going to address the slide anyway because it's not up there. But we did have some successes from last year's programs. Some of those are at 31 months, the Goodyear Big Brothers and Big Sisters. Match length is above agency average of the 27 months. Within three months of entering the I Help program, 64% of those individuals have found employment and 58 have found housing. COVID disruption led to a digital pivot for many agencies. Junior Achievement, for example, has begun to offer distance learning for money management, entrepreneurship, and work readiness. The Aqua Freea Food and Clothing Bank was able to leverage our contribution along with money raised in their fundraiser and from other partners to purchase a $83,000 refrigerated truck, a crucial tool protecting the quality of healthy foods for those in need. We look forward to sharing the impact of your investments and how they've helped our residents in a written report to council once we received all of the information. So this year, we had $14,400 available to distribute. We announced and posted this application process on the Goodyear website homepage and emailed to subscribers to this Community Funding Announcement Distribution List and members of the Faith and Community Roundtable. A media release was also sent out. We received 45 applications and 14 of those applications were first timers. Our Subcommittee had a very tough job, and that's the wrong number up there. This is an old slide, I apologize for that. Things were updated. But our Subcommittee had a tough job. They actually were, the requests from the applicants totaled over $424,000 and requested by those 45 applicants. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge and thank Councilmember Joe Pazillo, Councilmember Wally Campbell, and Councilmember Laura Kenaugh. They have prioritized the funding request and are advancing the following funding recommendations. The Subcommittee is recommending 114,400 in Goodyear Community Funding be dispersed to these 21 agencies. I won't read the list of names and associated recommending funding, but will leave the screen up for your review. With that, I look to you for approval of the recommended allocations and I'm happy to take any questions you may have. We had one presentation put together. I had asked for some changes and those changes were made, but the wrong presentation is up there. So.
That's fine.
Apologize for it.
That's fine.
Yeah, that's why you didn't have the correct number up there in the fiscal year. So again, apologies. So that concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you. Are there any comments from the public?
You still believe me? Thank you.
All right. Can I have a motion a second to approve the recommended, recommended allocations for FY 2020-21 Community Funding? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilwoman Campbell and a second from Councilwoman Pazillo. Open for council discussion. Councilwoman Laura Tano.
I just want to thank the members of the Subcommittee because I know you guys had a really tough job with all the need out there. And I think this will help, and these grants are big enough to really help some people. So thank you, guys. Thank you. And we had the right presentation here.
Oh, it's on your, but it's not up there. Okay, well, at least we know the right one's out there.
Any other comments? Yes.
Yeah, I say thank you as well. It does, it goes a long way to those nonprofits that are in the area. I mean, we don't, we don't do all those, those social services here in our city. We're not big enough. So being able to partner with nonprofits that provide those services to our residents is, is great. So I do appreciate everybody. I know it's not a huge amount of money, but it definitely goes a long way for those nonprofits. So thank you for, for vetting it. It's not easy, they're all great organizations.
I'd like to compliment you also because there was a variety of ones this year, some that I hadn't seen before. It certainly was a witness to your fairness in deciding some of these. So it was good to see, so thank you. All right. Discussion is finished, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, the ayes have it. We'll go to seventeen on business to consider approving the Intergovernmental Agreement with the Maricopa Association of Governments for the Bullard Wash Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. Parks and Recreation Director Nathan Torres is presenting.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight I'm excited to announce that Goodyear has received a grant from the Maricopa County or the Maricopa Association of Governments, MAG, to complete a Bullard Wash Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. The total cost of the master plan is $198,000, with MAG contributing 80% and Goodyear contributing the remaining 20%. Bullard Wash is identified as a major spine opportunity to create a vital and interconnected multi-use trail. This vision aligns with the city's general transportation and parks plans. The area being planned is the unimproved area from McDowell south to Estrella Mountain Regional Park. And as you're aware, the Bullard Wash is improved in this section north of McDowell, which is right next to Civic Square, or the future Civic Square. And we're excited about the opportunities that this plan will present for access to Civic Square as well. So once the master plan is complete, staff will continue to search for additional funding opportunities to advance this project into design and ultimately construction. Now, this may include grants and future longer-term CIP funding consideration. Tonight I respectfully request, I'm respectfully requesting your consideration in approving the Intergovernmental Agreement with Maricopa Association of Governments and associated administrative actions to facilitate this grant. And with that, I'd like to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the public?
No, Mayor.
Then would the City Clerk please read Resolution Number 2020-2075, the title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 2020-2075, Approving an Intergovernmental Agreement, IGA, with Maricopa Association of Governments for the Bullard Wash Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, authorizing the acceptance of the Grants, Grant Award Letter from the 2018-2022 Maricopa Association of Governments Transportation Improvement Program, providing the city manager or her designee with authorization and direction to carry out all actions necessary to facilitate the administration of the grant funding and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second to approve the Resolution 2020-2075 and to approve the related budget transfer of $39,600 from the city manager's general fund one-time contingency for the city's share of project costs associated with the grant? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilwoman Hampton and a second from Councilwoman Laura Tano. Open for council discussion. Councilwoman Campbell.
Well, I would like to thank you, Nathan, and everyone that's involved in MAG for coming and offering us this opportunity because the Bullard Wash really is the jewel of our city and it's going to absolutely define us as a destination place. So thank you all and I look forward to trying to figure out how we're going to fund it once we plan it. But this is the first step, so thank you so very much.
Thank you, this is the first step. And I'd like to give a quick shout out to Diana Vasquez, who led the grant submission and really worked with other departments to make sure we got a good submission in place.
Any questions? Councilwoman Hampton?
Yeah, no, I agree. I think this is a great, a great thing. I know we talked about it even during the General, General Plan Committee back when I was on that committee, just having the Bullard Wash as an amenity in the future. So it is great to see it now, just getting the study done and looking forward to the future for it. So thank you.
Project's been around for a while. So does it still go by the Cotton Lane Bridge? Or is that no longer? Remember originally it was going to go, and that's why underneath the bridge was wonderful art. If you've ever had time to go through it, it's just beautiful. So I was trying to determine that from that, but.
Yeah, so the, the current corridor has it going just east of the development complexes, the spring training facilities, and then underneath the railroad and grand roads to Estrella Park, or Estrella Mountain Regional Park.
Okay, thank you. All right. No more discussion, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stip.
Aye.
Councilmember Pazillo.
Aye.
Councilmember Laura Tano.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton.
Aye.
Councilmember Keno.
Aye.
Mayor Lord.
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, we're down to eighteen on business is to consider approving the General Fund Revenue Update Essential Budget Additions for FY 2021. Our Finance Manager and Budget Researcher is Laura Wigan-Roth. Laura?
It's always fun trying to find your presentation up there, too. All righty, thank you. Last week you finished adopting the FY 21 budget with the adoption of the property tax levies. And I'm here today to talk to you a little bit about the progress that we've made on revenue collections and to make some recommendations to spend some of those resources we set aside in contingencies, given that revenues are performing better than we had anticipated. So if you'll recall, we did adopt the budget or we developed the revenue estimates in March before we had any feedback on what was happening in our local economy before the, you know, the stay-at-home orders started and all those types of things. So they were prepared on a conservative basis. And you saw this information when I talked to you in June. But essentially in March, we're showing that we collected 860,000 more in ongoing sales tax than our estimates provided for and 1.2 million more in one-time construction sales tax revenues. In April, we collected 530,000 more in ongoing general fund sales tax revenues than we had included in our estimates. Again, still performing below the prior year because our estimates were reduced. And then we collected on, on more than 1.6 million additional construction sales tax above our estimates. I don't have a slide with the May revenues, but they did close the May business activity late last week. The revenues are surprising that we're looking at. We are doing a little bit of research on what we're getting on retail because it is significantly higher than last year same month. But we are, even without retail, large increase included, the other categories are about 600,000 more than our estimate on the ongoing side. And then again, construction isn't quite as much higher. It was about a million higher than our estimate. So, you know, conservatively, every additional dollar we're collecting in ongoing revenue this year would increase next year's revenue estimates because we build off of one year to the next. So we feel confident in saying that the sales tax revenues are holding, are performing above expectations. Still, still uncertainty out there. You know, we still have issues such as people spending stimulus money and those types of things. I will note that utility is the one category that's been lagging our estimates. Could be people that aren't paying their phone, their electric bills right now, don't know for sure. Just also wanted to let you know that the Arizona Sports and Tourism Association, if you remember, we started the process with a high estimate and new expectations to even receive revenue in FY 20. Then after March, they dropped those estimates. They did pay us about 250,000 more than the estimates they had provided. So we collected an additional 250,000 there. And then just as a reminder, of the money we set aside in the special general fund contingency, about 10 million of that was as a result of the Arizona Care's Funds being used to pay for public safety salary and benefits. So those dollars were collected and so that's a known dollar amount that we have received. So given that, we do, the executive team met to review the recommendations that we had developed initially in March. We had come up with a budget in March before the revenues were changed. And they looked at the next level of what they felt were the next most essential items to add. And this kind of breaks them into categories. Development support, I'll talk a little bit about that in the next two slides. So for now, I'll just skip, other than to say there's about 1.2 million dollars in recommendation, much of that coming from ongoing resources. We had some conversation at the tentative budget presentation, I believe, about some, or during your, the Public Art Plan presentation. So we are recommending that we add the Ballet Under the Stars, Shakespeare in the Park, Holiday Variety Concert and Goodyear Rocks, the one-time funding for those events to occur to give our residents an opportunity to participate in those activities. And then also that the food truck event would also be funded on a one-time basis for, for this coming year. There are some items involving employee technology and safety, employee and technology safety. The technology item is a way to stop people from trying to slow down our network by trying to do a bunch of things there. So that, that is being recommended. And then the other items are beginning the first of a three-year process to replace turn, two sets of turnouts with particulate barrier, barrier type turnouts. Add some funding to test turnouts. Replace wildland booths, all of that in fire. And then add wrap safety restraints for use in the police department. And those are to help dealing with restraining individuals that they may come in contact with. And then, then we also have two items that are infrastructure-related. 80,000 is included for beginning the study of corrosion and erosion that's happening where Bullard Wash meets the Buckeye Canal. That is something that's an obligation that we need to address that. So this 80,000 will begin the study of that particular area and come up with what we need to do. And the other 300,000 is a new capital project to do initial design and analysis of the Camelback Road for a potential future project to widen that, that particular road. In terms of the development and, so development services and engineering are, we're recommending adding a number of positions in those areas. And so one of the things I wanted to show you, I think we shared this particular chart with different data when we did the five-year forecast conversation in the winter. What this chart is showing you is on a calendar year basis residential building permits. So the first three blue bars are calendar 2017, 2018, and 2019. And the orangish reddish bars, pinkish bars, those are forecasts for calendar years 20, 21, 22, and 23 using the last forecast from the Arizona, University of Arizona, or School of Manag-, or College of Management. If you recall, we've been using their forecasts. So these forecasts came out in June, so they are informed by what's been happening recently. So what you're seeing there is with those forecasts, we would continue at very high levels of building permitting activity, at least from a residential perspective, for many more years, given those forecasts. And again, these are forecasts for the entire Metro Valley, not just for Goodyear, but it's our best approximation. And, and residential building permit is not all the activity. It's just an indicator that there is ongoing activity, and if there's more residences, there's more other activity as well. So what we're recommending for Development Services and Engineering is the addition of 10 positions. Three are in Development Services. There would be a building inspector, a code compliance officer, and a planner. And then in Engineering, we're recommending adding two techs for the permit counter, a civil engineer, a plans examiner, and three construction inspectors. These are areas where we have been spending, we've been using outside consultants and temporary help for many years, and it's not our normal practice to continue that. So we feel safe in recommending these positions be added. There will still be a need for higher levels of temporary help as well. So this is not a staff recommendation to meet the current peaks. It's a staff recommendation to meet what we think is a base level of operations that are going to continue for a while. And this is consistent with the budget, one of the financial policies, which is we should ensure that the development-related activities are funded in proportionate to the revenues that they're generating. So in terms of how these items are funded, in terms of everything except the ongoing portion of the Development Services and Engineering positions, those are being recommended to be funded by increasing their revenue estimates. That's consistent with our practice. Again, we always adopt the budget with a very conservative revenue estimate in this area. And our practice for the last couple of years was when we added those positions, we added the revenue that would go along with them. So the ongoing salaries and benefits of those 10 positions are being funded by increasing the revenue estimate for FY '21 for those positions. And on the next slide, I'll show you how that's done. But in the, all the rest of the recommendations are being, with the exception of the RAP restraints in the police department, those are funded from, we have a police officer safety fund. So those are being funded from the fund balance there. The rest are being funded from the special general fund contingency that we adopted that includes 17.1 million dollars of resources that we projected, even with the low revenue estimates, that we did not program or that you did not budget for a specific purpose. So we're showing you here what, we started with 15.3 million of one-time funding in that fund and 1.8 million of ongoing funding. With the changes recommended here, we still have near, over 16 million dollars that you have not yet assigned to expenses that are counting on the current revenue estimates. They aren't assuming higher revenue estimates. So we can continue to, so we feel confident, again, moving forward with this recommendation. The other thing we adopted in the budget was, if you'll recall, the original revenue estimates were about 12.3 million dollars higher than those we used in the adopted budget. And so we said we would create the appropriation capacity, that if more revenues came in, you'd have the ability to spend those revenues. And so that, where we're showing using 982,000 of that capacity, that's that increase in the revenue for the Development Services area because we did initially, or in the development-related fees, because we did initially have those revenue estimates higher as part of that 12.3 million dollar item. So with that, I'd ask you to add the, approve the mid-year budget additions and the related positions, and then also to authorize the related vehicle purchases because that, that area is already spending more than 500,000. You've already approved spending there, but we need you to allow them to spend more. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the public?
No, Mayor.
Can I have a motion a second to approve the required budget transfers of 1,986,400 for the general fund and 17,000 in the officer of safety equipment find? In addition of 10 full-time positions and vehicle-related expenditures to implement the additions discussed in the report? Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Campbell and a second from Councilman Stip. Open for coun, I'm sorry, Councilman Pizzillo. Open for discussion? Well, I think needs to be a discussion.
Mayor.
Is everybody, oh, I'm sorry. I, I can't talk now. It's now, Councilman Pizzillo.
You know, now the state is collecting for everybody, correct? The sales tax? And I know even prior to that time, when we were in the state collection system, and Phoenix and all were collecting their own, there has a tendency sometimes for some companies, because there's just a two-letter code, to report under the wrong jurisdiction. I guess my question is, I assume you're looking, I don't want to say the word assume, you're looking at any anomalies that pop in there just to make sure that we're not getting some money from somebody we're not supposed to be getting? Because with all of those now cities reporting, and you're looking at two letters, it doesn't take much to get somebody sending it to the wrong place or putting it under the wrong code. So is that all being monitored? I don't know what kind of software you have looking for anomalies, but that's always my biggest concern with everybody now going into that system, that some of it doesn't end up coming to the wrong jurisdiction.
Mayor, Councilmember, you, you understand where I am. That's why I did not quote a number for retail. It is shocking to me, the number we received. And so as soon as I saw those numbers, I asked our revenue analyst to start analyzing, comparing last year's same months. Do we have any new reporters? So we are doing that analysis right now.
Well, I appreciate that because I know how easy it is now. It's more difficult with all of these cities reporting under there. So I'm glad you're taking a look at those anomalies. Thank you.
Any other comments? Well, I have to say, there's been some surprises. It's the end of it all. We're doing quite well. And the city has got a lot of positive, positive areas building all over the city. We finally have the west side of the town developing. And with all of the ups and downs that Arizona has had, congratulations, Council and staff, because it's mind-boggling. But it's, it isn't pretend. It's from hard work and conservative attitude. So thank you very much. So let's vote on this. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. All right, we're down to information. Does the council have any comments or commendation or reports? All right, does the city manager would like to report, I'm sure?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just want to wish you, this is our last meeting before break. And so I hope everyone, even in these crazy pandemic times, is still able to find some, some life balance and take a break. Thank you.
Thank you. We wish you well, too, on your break away from us. It must be real nice not to have all of us. And I'm sure the assistants and everybody else will just enjoy this time. So the next meeting will be a regular meeting, August 24th, and let's hope the weather's not as hot as it is right now. No further business. This meeting is adjourned.